Uh, if you would, call and roll, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
He's here.
He's here.
Can you hear us, Adam?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Okay, would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That'll bring us to item two, which is our consent docket. Before I do that, I would read that if connections are lost, the city will attempt to restore communications for a maximum of thirty minutes. If communications cannot be restored, the meeting will reconvene at a certain date, time, and place. And then we'll move on to our consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held February first, 2021. Receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held January fifth, 2021. Approve a contract with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments for acceptance of a public fleet conversion grant in the amount of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Accept a five-foot drainage easement from Jason and Sherri Kreitzer at thirteen-fourteen Ladera Circle, and Jason and Blair Valentine at thirteen-eighteen Ladera Circle for construction of a drainage flume. Item E is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one in the amount of two million, six hundred, five thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty cents. Motion to approve, second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second for consent docket. You call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Thank you. Item three. Consider adoption of resolution number nine-eight-three-two-one of the City Council of the City of Moore, Oklahoma, approving the occurrence of indebtedness by the Moore Economic Development Authority in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed four million dollars in connection with the issuance of its sales tax revenue note, Series twenty-twenty-one municipal capital improvement project, providing that the trust indenture and amendment creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the general indenture as supplemented and amended, authorizing the issuance of said note, waiving competitive bidding and approving the proceeds of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, approving a security agreement between the city and the authority pertaining to the deposit and the transfer of sales tax revenue, ratifying and confirming an agreement of support between the Moore Public Works Authority and the authority whereby the Moore Public Works Authority agrees to transfer revenue to the authority and containing other provisions related thereto.
Mayor and council, this is the one that we had discussed previously to reimburse us for the cost of the ice storm cleanup back in October, waiting for the FEMA reimbursement that we'll ultimately get. That will take several months. Terry Hawkins and Chris Gander are here. Mr. Gander will have the interest rates that have been bid on.
Chris Gander, your financial advisor with BOK Securities. On this note, we called several different banks, BB&amp;T, RCB. We're both called, talked. Because this is such a short note and the amount and the rate, such a low rate environment, it's a lot of effort for banks to get them totally credit approved. So sometimes we put full-blown bid packs together, send it out to all the banks, have bids come in, kind of like with your GEO bonds, and we'll show you all the bids. We did a little less, a little more informal, but I called all the normal players, a bid on your finances. Got indications, not fully credit approved. They said if we approved it, we took it all the way through the process. These are what the rates would be. So those two banks both showed very close to two percent. BB&amp;T, which we've been doing other, most of them have been doing recently around the state, have been with BB&amp;T because they've been the lowest bid. They're just the hungriest right now. So the interest rate was point-nine-nine percent. They also, you can pay the whole thing off in one year, which is basically your first payment date. If you choose not to, it turns into a three-payment note. So it'll pay off in three years. On the, what I just handed out, it says anticipated closing. I didn't reprint them because we planned to approve this the same night as the GEO bonds, but we needed a supermajority, so that's why we're back tonight. So we're going to close Tuesday of next week. So four million dollars total interest at point-nine-nine on the four million dollars if you take it for the life of the deal. So if you take it all the way out for three years, it's seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars. So banks are making just a whole lot of money on this financing at these rates. So happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Yep, no questions? Okay. And we need a vote on this?
Yeah, recommend, recommend approval.
Motion to approve, second. All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes.
And I'll add, this was the first step. This is the city kind of ratifying what you will do in the authority, and that's where you're actually issuing the debt. So we'll have a saying, I'm happy to talk about it again if you'd like, but it's just the sister resolution.
Okay, great, thank you. Item four, consider approval of an amendment to the agreement with the Salvation Army for administering of rental mortgage and utility assistance program.
Mayor and council, this is just an amendment to the contract that we already have a Salvation Army to administer a rental mortgage and utility assistance program. They almost spent the thirty-five thousand that we've already allocated to them. They've asked for an additional ten thousand. We already have this budgeted in our second round of COVID funds, CDBG COVID funds, so we would not be pulling from any other pots of money. So we recommend approval.
All right, are there any questions? Motion to approve, second. Terry, none? We've had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries, thanks. Item five is consider adopting resolution number nine-eight-six-two-one, declaring necessity for acquiring certain real property and or easements from the Sider Family Revocable Trust near Sunny Lane and Indian Hills, more particular here and after, described all within the City of Moore, Cleveland County, State of Oklahoma, for the purpose of the Southeast Basin Lift Station and Sanitary Sewer Line Improvement Project in the City of Moore, and declaring the necessity for acquiring said properties for roadway and drainage purposes.
Mayor and council, resolution nine-eight-six addresses property needed for the Southeast Basin Lift Station and Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project in the southeast portion of Moore. This resolution authorizes the city attorney to proceed and begin the condemnation process for obtaining a sanitary sewer easement on the west side of Sunny Lane, approximately one-half mile north of Indian Hills. We've made fair and reasonable offers for the easement. However, in this particular case, we don't believe that we're going to be able to come together with an agreement. The property owner simply has indicated that he would like his day in court. We would ask that you approve resolution nine-eight-six. And we do need to ask that you, in your motion, you state that the purpose for this easement for the sanita, is for sanitary sewer improvement purposes. We did catch a small error in the resolution that this was correct if you would do that.
I'm curious, I should look a little better. Does it, does it disrupt any of their business or building? Or is it a home?
This is, this particular piece of property is basically a farm, farm home and field where they cut hay and so forth.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? No, we just need a motion. I make a motion that we approve resolution number nine-eight-six-two-one for the sanitary sewer re-improvement project.
Second.
Okay. Had a motion and a second. Call for the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Bring us item number six, is consider adopting resolution number nine-eight-seven-two-one, declaring the necessity for acquiring certain real property and or easements from the Praeter Family Trust near Bryant Indian Hills Road, more particular here and after, described as within the City of Moore, County of Cleveland, State of Oklahoma, for the purpose of the Southeast Basin Lift Station and Sanitary Sewer Line Improvement Project in the City of Moore, and declaring the necessity for acquiring said properties for roadway and drainage purposes.
Mayor and council, resolution nine-eight-seven also addresses property needed for the Southeast Basin Lift Station and Sanitary Sewer Improvement Projects. This resolution authorizes the city attorney to begin condemnation process for obtaining a roadway and utility easement located on the north side of Indian Hills Road and just west of Bryant Avenue. We have made fair and reasonable offers for the easement. However, as of today, we have not been able to come to terms with the property owner. Even though that we are asking to file for condemnation, we will continue to work with this property owner. And if we should come to an agreement, we will bring the agreement forward to council at a later date. Again, as with the last resolution, we found a correction that's needed and would, after we had gone to print, we would ask that you approve resolution nine-eight-seven and ask that in your motion state that the purpose for this easement is for the roadway and utility improvements.
Okay, any questions? Terry, none? Just need a motion and a second.
President, make a motion, wait for it.
Does it need, does the motion need to state the sewer improvements?
This motion, we would ask that you state that it's for roadway and utility improvements. It is for the sewer main, and that is the utility that's going in the roadway and utility easement.
All right. Did you get that, Danielle?
Maybe, make a motion for the roadway and the utility improvements.
Correct.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Outstanding.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries, thank you. Item seven is consider authorizing the budget for purpose of a John Deere four-ten-L backhoe loader from CL Boyd in the amount of a hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred ninety-one dollars, using state contract number SW zero-one-nine-two and waive competitive bidding.
Mayor and council, this backhoe is a budgeted item, budgeted in the amount of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, and it is being purchased off the state contract for the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars, approximately twelve thousand, five hundred dollar savings from the budget. This unit will be replacing a two thousand and eight backhoe in the utility department. The current backhoe is in very poor condition. It's been utilized on a daily basis. Maintenance costs continue to rise, and sometimes we even have to rent a backhoe when it's down. So we would ask that you approve the purchase of this backhoe as indicated in the budget.
Will we?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, and Louis, you had a question real quick?
Will we dispose of the other backhoe? Or will we keep it as a backup?
I believe this one would probably go in on the auction.
Okay, second. All right, any other questions? We had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries, thank you. Item eight is consider approval of a letter agreement in the amount of thirty thousand dollars with traffic engineering consultants in for design of Southwest Nineteenth Street corridor, corridor traffic signal improvements.
Mayor and council, this is an agreement with traffic engineers just to improve the traffic signal. Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item nine is our consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held February first, twenty-twenty-one. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one in the amount of five hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. Motion to approve, second. All right, had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item ten, it's consider adoption of resolution number two-four-nine-two-one of the trustees of the Moore Public Works Authority, authorizing an agreement of support by, by and between the authority and the Moore Economic Development Authority.
Mayor and council, this is just a companion item to item number three that we've already heard and item fourteen that's upcoming. Recommend approval.
All right, any questions? Motion to approve, second. We've had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Let the record reflect that we're all still here. Item eleven is our consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held February first, twenty-twenty-one. And item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one in the amount of four hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy cents. Motion to approve, second. We had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here. Item thirteen is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes. Item passes. Item fourteen, consider adopting, adoption of resolution nineteen-twenty-one of the trustees of the Moore Economic Development Authority, authorizing the issuance of its sales tax revenue note, Series twenty-twenty-one Improvement Project. The note in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed four million for the purchase of financing, the repair and cleanup operations resulting from the October twenty-twenty ice storm. And item two, paying certain costs of issuance in connection with the referenced financing collected the project in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, and paying certain legal and financing costs, waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the note to be sold on a negotiated basis, ratifying, approving, and authorizing the execution of a security agreement between the city and the authority pertaining to the deposit and transfer of sales tax revenue, ratifying, approving, and authorizing the execution of a Series twenty-twenty-one supplemental note indenture, which along with the general indenture, the Series two thousand nine supplemental note indenture, the Series twenty-fourteen supplemental note indenture, the Series twenty-sixteen supplemental note indenture, and the Series twenty-seventeen supplemental note indenture shall be referred to collectively as the indenture, and which indenture authorizes the issuance and secures the payment of the note, providing that the trust indenture as amended, creating the authority, is subject to the provisions of said indenture, authorizing and directing the execution of the note and other documents relating to the transaction, including, but not by way of limitation, an agreement of support by and between the authority and the Moore Public Works Authority, and authorizing employment of financial advisor and bond counsel pertaining to said financing and containing other provisions related thereto.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes. Item passes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Okay. Our new business is citizens forum and items not on the agenda. We did have one citizen or one gentleman, Ryan Walters, who signed up to address the council. Come on up. And if you would, just state your address for our record.
Absolutely. Good evening, mayor and members of the council and staff. My name is Brian Walters. I am a licensed CPA in the state of Oklahoma. My address is fifteen thirteen, southwest one hundred and thirteenth place in Oklahoma City. And I'm here on behalf of the Moore Youth Football Association. I've actually been hired to not only help them in their finances, but also represent them in some of the issues coming before you in the next couple of weeks. And that's actually why I wanted to come today, to give you a, basically, an overview of what's going to be before you in the next couple of weeks regarding the Moore Youth Football, Moore Youth Football Association. Every two years, the lease on the football fields comes up for renewal. Normally, this is a very vanilla thing. You may not even remember it coming before you. It probably passes through without much discussion. Unfortunately, this year, there may be a little bit more discussion than what you're normally used to seeing in this regard. Currently, like I said, I believe it's March the first of twenty-twenty-one, the lease for that, that field comes up for renewal. The Moore Youth Football Association will be making their proposal to re-lease those football fields for another two years. This association has been around since nineteen sixty-nine in some form or another, and has continued to provide amazing benefits to the children of the Moore community. While I do have an address in Oklahoma City, I did graduate from Moore High School a number of years ago, so I do also see Moore as my home. In that regard, the Youth Football Association in this process to reapply for this lease and to continue this tradition that's been going on for the last fifty or so years has run into an issue where there are parties involved now that have ill intent towards this youth football program continuing to perform in the way it has before. You know, their goal is not to obviously make a lot of money. Their goal is to provide services to the community. At this time, they do that and have fulfilled that obligation. The movement that is underway right now is to cause some issues with the Moore Youth Football Association actually renewing this lease with the city. As we are all very well aware, cities in general are very risk adverse, and there's a movement to use some legal threats against the city for basically breach of contract and breach of the lease with the Moore Youth Football Association. The lease is obviously public record, and as their representative and their accountant, I'd be more than happy to go over any of the details regarding their finances with the city and any of the city staff. The gist of it is, is that there has been a breach on both sides of the lease, both from the city standpoint and from the association's standpoint. If you are aware, there are actually two types of breaches in a contract. There are minor breaches and material breaches. The parties involved in leases or contracts or agreements can basically agree, basically in words or in deeds, to set those breaches aside and act as if it's an agreed upon part of the contract. And that's what has happened here for the last number of years. All the details of the leases have not been carried out to the letter of the law. But I think the intent is there, the intent to provide, you know, services to the community and to be a place where kids can go where kids can go and they can learn the game of football and participate and grow and be productive citizens. The members who lead this organization have been proven over and over again, time and time again, that they are invested in the community. They're out there endless hours working, using the resources of the association to improve the fields, et cetera, et cetera. I could go one and one. While my time is very limited this evening, I do expect that this conversation will continue. But as I said, I wanted to give you a heads up as to what is happening. Part of the issue that's going on with the contract has been the financial records kept by the association. They have had some issues with bookkeepers in the past, and if you're not aware, bookkeepers in Oklahoma don't have any kind of regulatory body like CPAs do. So we are going to rectify that. We are going to make sure going forward that records are kept according to the lease. And as my understanding, that actually the lease is going to be modified quite a bit then out of its curve. So over the next couple of weeks, we will be working with the parks and recreation department to square away any old issues that are out there. But some of the issues that have been brought up by the folks that are trying to cause some issues with us renewing the lease, some of those issues are not issues that can be solved overnight. They have some, there's some tax questions, there's some record keeping questions, and those things cannot be solved in the next, you know, 13 days. So throughout this process, our intent is, and our goodwill will be to, you know, on a go-forward basis, to make sure that we are abiding by the lease more appropriately than maybe what has been done in the past. And again, my number, all my contact information is, you know, is record now, and I'd be more than happy to talk to any of the council members, parks, anybody that may have, may have questions regarding our go-forward plan with the association. But please be, rest assured, that it is our intent to continue to lease the football fields and continue this 50-year tradition with the Moore Youth Football Association, and continue to provide these services to the community in the best way possible. And so I thank you all for your time this evening. Again, we're available for any questions that any of you may have, and we'll look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks when this comes up for a vote, I'm quite sure. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Just work diligently with our parks department and, you know, do make them happy with what they're doing. If there's things the city needs to do, y'all discuss that, and hopefully they'll come forward with a good report or recommendation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you repeat his name? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
It's Brian Walters.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else here that would like to speak? No one else has signed up? And that will go to items from the city council. Trustees, anyone?
Mark, something. I had a couple of emails and one in particular that I wanted to share from one of our citizens, and I'm going to read it verbatim because I really like how it's written. "Icy roads are right for the city of Moore. They keep our roads clear, standard better than any verse around Indianapolis. I'm always grateful for the excellent work they do in our police department. Your excellent performance continues to excel and to include our past years' severe weather." And in a conversation with this gentleman, he wanted to make sure that the people actually doing the work knew how thankful they were and how thankful our citizens were. So I wanted to share that. Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, council?
I just wanted to say thank you again, Mark, for taking over the meeting, and as you guys know, hopefully just about then with concussion therapy, and I didn't want to fall and start that over again, so thank you again.
Well, we want you to be 100% and get back here as soon as you can.
I'm marking on.
All right. Our city manager, trustee.
Mayor and council, next week in the council chambers, they'll be in to do the upgrades to our audiovisual system that the council approved the funding for two, three months ago, so all the equipment's in, so hopefully there will be noticeable improvement in that. I would also like to thank everybody on the crews for all the streets. The streets look good. I've also received some emails complimenting our work on that, and that's all I've got.
Okay, and I would second that as well. All of our emergency services, street personnel, sanitation, everybody's doing a great job. So thank you. And item 16 is executive session, and you're free to go. You don't have to stick around for this. You're not going to upset me if you decide to leave. I probably would if I could. Anyways, item 16, section 307, title 25, Oklahoma statute permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney, the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending tort claim filed on behalf of Freddie Alvarez alleging he was discriminated against on the basis of his race and national origin in violation of Title VII of the Civil Rights Act and Oklahoma's Anti-Discrimination Act, and authorize for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city as authorized by 25 Oklahoma State Statute 307B4. Item B is discuss, and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation styled Bob Presley and Darlene Presley versus the City of Moore and Viola Water North American, America Case Number CJ 2020-905, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the defendant as authorized by 25 Oklahoma State Statute 307B4. Item C is discuss, and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation styled BNSF Railway Company versus City of Moore, Oklahoma, Case Number CIV 20-714-J, cause number TD 20200005, and authorize staff to proceed as directed in executive session as authorized by 25 Oklahoma State Statute 307B4.
Make motion, we convene to executive session.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Yeah, so the council members can stay here, along with Jerry, Randy, Brian, Robert. Everyone else needs to exit the chambers right now, please.
That's because we're doing Zoom. We can't go to our chambers, so we're going to have to use it.
Okay, sure. All right, thanks, Jerry. Y'all seem to always bring these in batches.
We, it just springs out when we don't have anything at all.
Yeah.
Just keep everything tanned down.
That'll be such a good sound. Blows up.
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion to convene, or to reconvene from executive session.
So move.
Thank you.
We had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
There.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Okay, then item F is action.
All right, I made a big motion, we deny.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Okay, item denied. Now we go to item B.
Motion we proceed as directed in executive session?
Second.
Okay, call the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. And that will take us to item C.
Motion we proceed as directed in executive session?
Second.
Okay, call the vote, please.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. All right, done with that, and item 17 is adjournment.
Salute.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Call the vote, please.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. It's good to see you guys.
Thank you.